A formal session here today. I call this meeting to order, and I'm going to ask Pastor Tony Wotzky from Kempsville Church of God to please come and give our invocation.
Thank you. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we love you and thank you. Thank you for this day and this opportunity to be together. I thank you for these men and women who lead and direct this community. Lord, I pray that you would give them wisdom and guidance. I pray that you would bless them. I pray for our community, Lord, that you would just continue to strengthen it. I pray that you would continue to bless it, provide for this community and the needs of this community. And, Lord, I pray for our meeting tonight, that you would just keep your hand upon it, that you would give wisdom and guidance and prosperity to everything that happens tonight. We give it into your name, in the mighty name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. And may I ask for a moment of silence for all of those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice to make our country so great? Thank you. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all very much. Okay, do we have a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, all present.
Okay, thank you. I now ask for a motion for the certification of the closed session. Okay, we're going to have to do a voice roll call tonight due to technical difficulties. Okay?
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley? Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Remick?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Solman?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you've certified the closed session.
Ah, the ayes have it. Okay, motion for the approval of the minutes of the informal and formal sessions of May 16th, 2023, and the special formal session of May 23rd, 2023.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Remick?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Solman?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you approve the minutes for May 16th and May 23rd.
Thank you. You know, counsel is always delighted to have presentations honoring the appropriate people that deserve the recognition. And first up, I'm going to ask my dear friend, Celeste Murphy-Green, to come up. And I understand that you're going to be presenting the Christine Mann-Darden Award tonight. Welcome. Good to see you.
Yes, thank you so much, counsel, for welcoming me here. My name's Celeste Murphy-Green. I'm a professor at University of Virginia School of Continuing and Professional Studies and also the executive director of the Center for Environmental Justice and Resilience. I'm also representing the Hampton Roads Chapter of the American Society for Public Administration, where I serve on the council and have been a council member for many years. Many times, in the spring, we give out awards, and Mayor Dyer has been the recipient of one of our awards. All of our awards have been named after women, excuse me, after men. And I thought, there is a time where we need to have an award named after a woman. There's many deserving public servants in the area. So this is the inaugural award of the Dr. Christine Mann-Darden Outstanding Public Employee in Hampton Roads Award. And I had the honor to meet Dr. Darden at a book signing for the book Hidden Figures back in, I believe, 2017. She was a very humble woman, and she really impressed me with just her demeanor. And once I read a little bit more about her reading the book Hidden Figures, it was evident that she has made an amazing contribution. So I'll go ahead and read. This award is awarded to a minority Hampton Roads public sector employee. The award honors Dr. Christine Mann-Darden. Dr. Darden is internationally known for her research into supersonic aircraft noise, especially supersonic boom reduction, and recognized for her groundbreaking achievement as the first African-American woman at NASA Langley to be appointed to the top management rank of senior executive service. She is equally known for her efforts to inspire, educate, and educate generations of aerospace scientists and engineers. Too often, the effort of frontline employees goes unnoticed and therefore unheralded. This award is to highlight those who have continuing excellence in the performance of their duties, a demonstrated record of dedicated efforts to their work, and maintain quality service to the community. And the recipients of this award must meet the following criteria: be a public sector employee representing a minority group as defined by the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, demonstrate a record of continuing excellence in performance of their duties, demonstrate a record of dedicated efforts to their work, and demonstrate a record of maintained quality service to the community. So it was unanimously decided that Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond be the first honoree to receive this award due to her outstanding contribution and long-lasting commitment to public service in Hampton Roads. So I'm honored to be here to give this award tonight, this certificate. Dr. Ross Hammond currently represents Kempsville District in the Virginia Beach City Council, and her career includes serving as a professor at Norfolk State University and been an educator for over 40 years, focusing her public service on women and minorities in Hampton Roads. There's too many things to go over, her whole distinguished career, but one of the highlights, I would say, when I first met Dr. Ross Hammond at a Kempsville Historic Planning Meeting, was the fact that she secured 4.8 acres of land for the city council to build the city's first African-American cultural center, and she's just made a huge contribution to the area. So we want to take this time to recognize her.
Thank you, Celeste. That was magnificent.
Oh, boy. Dr. Green, before you disappear, I want to tell her how humbled I am to receive this award. When I used to teach over at Norfolk State University, I told the students, put out your best. You never know who's watching you. And this is an example where I got the call and the letter that they wanted to honor me in this capacity. So thank you very much. I thank the Hampton Roads Chapter of the American Society of Public Affairs, and especially to thank Dr. Marina Sigatlin, President, and Dr. Celeste Award for being the first recipient of such award. As you remember, recently, you heard about the supersonic boom, and here it is for the lady who was part of making this happen. So I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. And now time for a bittersweet moment for our city. We ask Taylor Adams to please come forward. Whereas Taylor V. Adams joined the city of Virginia Beach in 2015 at the city's purchasing agent, chief procurement officer, and was promoted to Finance Operations Administrator in 2017. Taylor would later go on to fill two indispensable roles, first as Director of Economic Development in 2018, and then as Deputy City Manager for Economic Development, Convention and Visitors Bureau, Agriculture, and Planning in 2021. Way to go. That's a lot of stuff. Whereas Taylor completed his undergraduate at Mississippi State University and holds a master's degree of administration from the Hull Institution International Business School in London, England. In addition to his education, Taylor is a certified public purchasing officer. And whereas Taylor's work experience encompasses both the private and public sector, Taylor's most notable roles include Chief Administrative Officer for the city of Starkville, Mississippi, Purchasing Manager for Mississippi State University, Chief Marketing Officer, Managing Partner for Benefit Concept PA, and Business Development Officer, Commercial Credit Analyst for the National Bank of Commerce of Mississippi. During Taylor's tenure in Mississippi, he was the recipient of the 2011 MAGPPA President's Award, and in 2012, Taylor was named the Mississippi Purchasing Manager of the Year. And whereas Taylor's time with the city resulted in substantial sustainable growth, he was pivotal in rebuilding economics department development and brought more than $1.4 billion in capital investment, over 6,000 new jobs, and induced direct foreign investment in Virginia Beach through the establishment of three international offices. Taylor's efforts have bolstered the local economy by increasing tax revenues to support infrastructure and services. And whereas, under Taylor's leadership, capital investments included the $15.8 million investment from Acoustical Sheet Metal Company and $5.3 million expansion from Premium PPE created nearly 300 jobs between the two. Furthermore, Taylor's guidance propelled the $27 million drone-up expansion that created 655 jobs and a $49 million steel expansion, adding 15 new positions. Taylor was instrumental in the $335 million mixed-use project of the former Virginia Beach Dome site. Taylor also oversaw the Hive, a collaborative workspace for local businesses to connect with economic development in the small woman and minority of business procurement office. And whereas Taylor is natural at cultivating and nurturing public-private partnerships, he's most noteworthy partnerships brought national recognition to our beach, such as Something in the Water Festival, Beach It, the Atlantic Park Project. And whereas, Taylor was recognized by the 2022 Power List by the Virginia Business 500. In 2023, CoVA Biz Magazine honored Taylor as one of the 10-plus leaders who are changing the game or playing crucial roles in the current projects and initiatives shaping our reason. And whereas, Taylor serves as the Chair of the Governing Board of the National Institute of Government Procurement, a professional association with approximately 20,000 members serving state and local governments. In addition, Taylor serves on the Virginia Wesleyan's President's Council, Ocean Land Use Conformity Committee, Hampton Roads Workforce Council, Board of Directors, and the Virginia Tourism Board of Directors. Whereas these achievements are the direct result of Taylor's charisma, stout leadership, and devotion. Now therefore be resolved that the Virginia Beach City Council pause in its deliberations to express its appreciation to Taylor V. Adams for his contributions and growth to the vitality of our city, adopted by the City Council of the City of Virginia Beach the 6th date of June 2023, and present this resolution duly signed by each member of the Virginia Beach City Council. And may I ask all my city council colleagues, please join me down below to honor Taylor V. Adams. And I'll tell you what we clearly welcome is each council member would like to go up and say a comment about.
Well, I'll start off. So, thank you. Bittersweet indeed is the word for the evening, for sure. As you all know, I'm a commercial real estate agent now in 38 years, like it or not, but I work with a lot of economic development officers and directors around the region. He is one of the best, if not the best, to work with. He's represented our city. Well, I don't do that much business in this city, but he is the best. Best of luck to you and your family. Also, I might say a couple more things. You brought offshore wind, attention to offshore wind to our region, also an advocate for the Port of Virginia, which is a big part of our economy. But lastly, Kathy Warren is our new Director of Planning, and I think that's under your purview as well, so your parting shot is well received. Thank you, Taylor Adams.
Taylor, we could be here for a while, but I'll just try to keep my remarks brief. I just want to just affirm what Councilmember Remick said about your abilities and your unique skills at attracting and retaining jobs, promoting our workforce, putting Virginia Beach on the map. I'm going to miss you as a partner and advocate, particularly in the action sports arena. I think you've transformed Virginia Beach. You supported Something in the Water and really placed Virginia Beach in a position that is poised for continued success, and I'm grateful for that. But what I'm going to remember about you, Taylor, I think more than that, is how each and every one of those things connect to the people who live here. I've known you within city government, in the community, to be a champion for equality, a champion for opportunity, a champion for people who are underserved. You've been recognized in the community for those efforts. So as important as economic development is, as important as attracting and retaining businesses, it's about how we help our people, how we help the people who live here and visit here, and you've excelled in that area particularly. So your impact there will be missed the most by me. Thanks, Taylor.
Well, Taylor, I remember when you were hired, and your kids were only this big, and now they're taller than me. But I've noticed that you've always been family-oriented. You believe in diversity, equity, and with whatever was brought forth to you, you were there to help, and you always had that commitment and passion for how can we help you with a smile. And I've gotten to know your family. You will be sorely missed. You are an outstanding businessman, so no wonder everybody wants you. But who knows? Maybe one day you'll be back in our territory. Thank you.
Well, I almost cried when you told me you were leaving, but we're not going to do that right now. Virginia Beach is definitely a better place because you were here for nine years. But not only for the business that you've brought in and your wonderful ability to... Listen, I'm seeing this man in action. He's a man with the velvet glove. It's iron on the inside and velvet on the outside because he knows how to talk to people, to structure a great deal, and he's done that over and over and over again. So not only business-wise and economic development-wise have you done an amazing job, but you've been an integral part of this community. People know you. People love you and care about you, and the calls that we got said, "You can't let him leave. You can't let him leave." And we don't want you to leave. However, when you have a great talent such as yours, it's not fair for us to hold you back. And as much as we're going to miss you, we know that you have an incredible future ahead of you, but I think you'll still come back to at least visit, and maybe, like Amelia said, maybe one day you'll come back for good, because we know you love this city, and this city has embraced you and loved you back. So thank you for what you've given, because I know there's been a lot of late nights. I know there's been a lot of nights away from home, especially when you have a beautiful wife like Phoenix and four children. But you have given us 300%, maybe more, but we're very, very grateful to have had that time with you. Thank you.
Mr. Adams, known you for a short time, and I just want to thank you for the contributions you made to our city. When I think of my experience with you, I see a laser-focused executive that's going to continue to excel wherever you go, and I appreciate the vision that you've shown as it relates to the action sports. I got to see it this weekend, first and up front and center, and all those that were a part of that acknowledged your role in that. So God bless you. Continue to work as hard as you do, and we know the sky's the limit. So thank you.
So I first met Taylor through my husband when he was on council, and then when I was able to meet Taylor in this capacity, something that's been consistent across that time is how you're excellent at what you do as an executive, but you're human about it. So how you humanize your interaction and with Something in the Water, right? Like, you might have been sweating a little bit, but you were smiling, and you were keeping things cool and calm and collected and making sure things were running as best as they could for our city and for our citizens. So I'm happy for you and for Phoenix and for your daughters, and I love getting to know Phoenix as well, so shout out to her and all. Safe travels, and I wish all the best for you. You deserve it, and you're great as an executive, but you've been a wonderful human in our community as well, so thank you.
Mr. Adams, you will be sorely missed, and I am so proud to know that you are a valued resident, at least for a little while longer, of District 9 in Ocean Park. And my family will miss your family. I personally will miss the enthusiasm, creativity, and expertise that you've brought to the table. Ever since I first met you, I met you as I was taking part on Virginia Beach Vision, and I got to see how you not only were an ambassador for our city, but brought us opportunity, and you, just your critical thinking ability in terms of getting through tough situations and having creative solutions to what otherwise might be insurmountable problems. So I thank you for your service, and I look forward to remaining in touch with you.
Well, it's not been really that long ago that this young, very professional man came to work for Patty Phillips and really got the attention of everybody in the administration building there because he seemed to be able to do a little bit of everything. And you have certainly done a little bit of everything since you've been working here at Virginia Beach. Being able to step up to that next level and perform has been amazing. And I think for the past couple of years, you've been the man, as someone described it, who gets the iron out the door, and we really appreciate that. But listening at your resume, it was pretty obvious that you have other great things coming, and our loss is certainly going to be Nevada's gain. Wish you the best, and don't forget about us. Come back next summer and enjoy Something in the Water.
Thank you, Taylor. And I think everything that needs to be said has been said, except for one thing. If you could fire up the spare bedroom, my wife and I have some traveling to do this summer and love to come visit. So thank you for everything you've done, Taylor. And when I first got in contact about this, I said it'd be a big loss for our city. So thank you. Great job.
Okay, on behalf of a grateful city and a grateful city council, a grateful city management staff, and people of Virginia Beach, thank you, God bless you, and nothing but success.
Mayor, is it all right if I say one or two things?
Definitely.
Thank you. I won't extend your meeting. I'll start while everybody makes their way back around. Probably the most important thing that I could say at this point is thank you. To the... It's interesting. In eight years, we've had a number of city councils. There's been quite a bit of turnover on the body, but standing here, I'm so grateful to this city council and to all of the councils that I've had the pleasure of serving through the city manager. It's hard to believe that in eight years, there have been five managers, if you count the interims. And I'm so... And each of them, from the four prior, I learned a great deal. But I am so grateful to the time that I got to serve with them and learn from them, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention our current manager, who has... One, there's not a thing that's been accomplished under my tenure since he arrived that wasn't possible without his support and without him allowing me to sort of run a little bit. In addition to professionally, also one of my closest friends personally. And so, Patrick, I just want to say thank you for everything you've allowed my team to do while we were here. Finally, I'll just say, it's interesting to hear about the things that we've done over the last eight years. I feel like I blink my eyes and it's all happened. Mayor, like you say, nobody does these things alone. That's absolutely true. I couldn't... There's nothing that my teams have done here without a ton of work from a ton of people to whom I will forever be grateful. So I just want to say for everyone who I've had the opportunity to work with and as it relates to my portfolio to lead here, thank you for all that you've done for this city. Thank you for all that you've done for our community. And Councilmember Remick, you mentioned Kathy. You know, I certainly didn't get them all right in the eight years that I was here, but one thing that, and I'm grateful to Patrick for this, a couple of things we absolutely got right was Kathy Warren as the Director of Planning and Community Development, Nancy Hellman, who's here, as well as the Director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And so, I mean, David Tremmer in agriculture is sort of the most senior department director. I can't take credit for him, but I'm grateful for the work that he does. And then also, of course, I'm so proud of the work, and I'm so grateful for the opportunity that you all gave us to rebuild the Economic Development Department and that team. That team just continues to amaze me every day. So with that, just thanks to all of you sincerely. It has meant so much to me and so much to my family to be able to work with all of you and to serve this community through you. And so, thank you all so much, and I'm blown away. I'll be eternally grateful for this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. A well-deserved honor. That's what makes VB strong. Okay, next, Councilmember Berlucci is going to do a resolution of Joe Burnsworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we go from one extraordinary person to another extraordinary person, and now to the next extraordinary person, and it's a great privilege. Joe Burnsworth is here with us tonight, along with his husband, Bill, and many friends and supporters and fans. Joe is a longtime public servant in the city of Virginia Beach. You'll learn a little bit more about his contributions in a moment, but as he enters another phase in his life, true retirement from the school division and traveling with his family and friends, we didn't want to miss an opportunity to recognize his contributions, to thank him for his contributions, and to honor him for making Virginia Beach a better place to live. So Joe, I'd like to invite you to join us at the podium.
Good evening and welcome.
Whereas, Joe Burnsworth served as an educator in Virginia Beach City Public Schools for... 40 years. During that period, he was a classroom teacher, program director, assistant superintendent, and building-level principal. And whereas, Joe served on the planning committee for the International Baccalaureate Program at Princess Anne High School, the coordinator for the secondary gifted programs, and on the planning committee for the Math and Science Program at Ocean Lakes High School, and Kemp's Landing Magnet School. And whereas during Joe's tenure at Princess Anne High School, he taught theater arts and had only a full-length play, and had the only full-length play ever selected from Virginia Beach to be performed at the International Thesbian Festival. Joe continued to support the arts by serving the Educational Theater Association as the state director, territorial director, executive regional director, international board of trustees, and international president. And whereas throughout Joe's career, his work focused on creating opportunities for students, including designing the move to school-wide implementation of the International Baccalaureate Program, which provides access to this rigorous curriculum to all students at Plazam Middle School. Joe initiated and planned the change from one day a week to full-time programming at Old Donation School for gifted students in grade two through five. And as a member of the Green Run Collegiate Governing Board, he helped charter the Green Run Collegiate Foundation and served as the first president of the organization. And whereas, while serving as assistant superintendent of curriculum and instruction, Joe wrote and presented the proposal for Green Run Collegiate, the first public charter school approved by the Virginia Board of Education and Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Green Run Collegiate remains the only IB high school in the Commonwealth to host all three program options, IB diploma, career-related certificate, and IB course to their students. In addition to his work at Green Run Collegiate School, he established the workforce readiness partnership between Green Run Collegiate and Centura College, Centera Healthcare, and Truist Financial, creating career awareness and internship opportunities. And whereas, Joe chaired the Bright Futures Gala for five years, which strived to ensure access to portions of the IB program for all Green Run Collegiate students regardless of socioeconomic background, including full payment for IB exams, career certification assessments, enrichment activities, and the Summer Bridge Program. And aside from his contributions to our schools, Joe was an active member of the Virginia Beach Human Rights Commission from 2019 to 2023. As a member, Joe worked to blend his passion for education with that of advocating for young people who are so often marginalized, including LGBTQ+ and trans youth, young people of color, and those who come from low socioeconomic backgrounds in order to protect their rights as citizens in our community. And whereas, Joe chaired the 2022 Human Rights Commission Awards Ceremony. Then in 2023, Joe revised and modernized the Human Rights Commission bylaws in the form of policy and procedures to provide more flexibility, clearer processes, and to better align with city policy, procedures, expectations. And whereas, on this day, we honor an educator and a volunteer who deserves our deepest gratitude and respect for all that he has accomplished and for his efforts to empower Virginia Beach citizens to reach their fullest potential through access, equality, and opportunity. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Virginia Beach City Council pause in its deliberations to express its appreciation to Joe Burnsworth for his outstanding and longstanding commitment to our schools and to our city. Joe, thank you for your service. Thank you for your friendship. Thank you for your leadership and vision and for the impact that you've had on our community. It will be my pleasure to present you with this resolution signed by each member of this body. And I'd like to invite you to say a few words. But before you do that, I think at least one member of the body would like to say a few words as well. So, I'll just pause for a moment. We're going to come down and present you with the resolution and then allow you to say a few words.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add just a few more things. Thank you, Councilman Berluci, for that proclamation. And I thought I knew Mr. Burnsworth pretty well until I heard everything, Joe, that you've done in your career. I mean, this school system that we have in Virginia Beach is treasure of this community and this region, and you were a part of a lot of that, of our success today. And it's incredible what you've contributed to everyone, both students that excel, but also for equality, and students who are struggling all the way to the best. So, thank you. I've served on the board on Green Run Collegiate with you. I cherish that. It's on its feet. It's on its way. It's a big part of this community. So, thank you for that, and I hope you will remain, and not in retirement, but to advocate and to give us advice and to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, please.
I know I have pages here, but I promise it is, it's not a commencement address, but I also, if you know me, you know I wear my heart on my sleeve. And if I don't write it, it will disappear in my emotions. So, that's why I have it here. I am beyond grateful and humbled, but not just for me, because anything I've done, I didn't do alone. So, with this resolution, you recognize the hard-working and passionate teachers of this division, whom I've been privileged to work with. Teachers like my nephew Larry and his beautiful wife Becky, who have both dedicated 22 years of their lives, serving the school division and children every day. You recognize community volunteers and change agents, such as my friend, Dr. Wendy Howard, who has picked up the leadership mantle and will guide the Green Run Collegiate Governing Board into the next decade. You honor creative thinkers and leaders who value the voices of their students and create a school where it's a family, where differences are not only accepted, but they are appreciated. Leaders like our International Baccalaureate Coordinator, Tanya Waters, and our Green Run Collegiate Head of School, Rianna Patricio. You also honor members of the Human Rights Commission, present and past, who have stood beside me as we work through difficult situations. Others who have supported me along this journey, sit with you on this dais. Josh Schulman, who has become a friend and trusted advisor. You've heard worse speak, that we work together on our foundation board, but he's also my neighbor and friend. And of course, Michael Berluci, who introduced this educator who had never led anything other than a school to so many people and has provided so many opportunities to our students throughout the year. But nothing that I have accomplished or mean anything without my husband, Bill, who has stood beside me and supported me for the past 21 years. But the people who really should be standing here are my parents, Irene and Enik Burnsworth, who taught me what leadership and service are through their own sacrifice and example. It was they who brought a naive 21-year-old who had never lived in any other household to Virginia Beach in 1977 to begin a career as a theater arts teacher at Princess Anne High School. In that year, I was one of 30 brand-new teachers at Princess Anne High School, and this, as our city population began to explode. This new class of teachers was recruited from West Virginia and Pennsylvania and Ohio and states north. And I remember vividly driving down Princess Anne Road to the school administration building on a two-lane road with deep ditches on both sides, wondering, surely I have gotten the directions to the school board and city offices wrong? Because past Edwin Drive, there were a few homes and nothing but fields. So, why would a city complex be out here? I remember going to my first convocation of all staff at the dome and saying out loud, wow, there is nothing this cool in West Virginia. In those days, the student population of Princess Anne was growing so much with the students who would eventually be zoned for Green Run High School, that I taught my theater classes behind a curtain onstage while they were massive study halls in the seats. Now I proudly live in a city where the number of high schools has more than doubled since the time I began. I no longer think I'm lost on my way to see plays at Cox High School, and a surf park will be located where the dome once stood. And some of the students I first taught now have grandchildren attending the school division. And the vast majority of those teachers I started with at Princess Anne High School are retired. And in 1977, I would be addressing a city council of white males, who would never have thought of recognizing Pride Month, let alone an openly gay male, for having done something he loves and that fills his heart with joy, that giving back to this community gives me. But look at us. I look at the diversity on that dais and in this room with pride. I'm thrilled that as a city, we're inching our way to true neighborhood representation on city council. These are things all of us should be proud of and grateful for. But before I leave the podium, I want to challenge you with two things. Please continue to put programs and funds in place that support those who are marginalized in our community. Among those are the economically challenged, those whose first language is not English, the LGBTQ and trans members of our community, the elderly, those who are handicapped, and those who suffer from mental, who have mental health issues. They need you to protect their human rights and to lead by example. As a principal, I always told my teachers that when making a decision, visualize the face of the most vulnerable student in your classroom, and then make a choice that will benefit him or her, and then make adaptations for others. But certainly, never make a choice on what is easiest or most beneficial to you. I ask that you use that same method when making your decisions that impact the students of Virginia Beach, I mean, the citizens of Virginia Beach. My second challenge is that if you have not already done so, please take the time to visit Green Run Collegiate, Virginia's first public charter school. I truly believe, truly believe, that in the past 10 years, it has been the best-kept secret in our city. It was designed to and currently provides an equitable opportunity for any student to successfully complete the rigorous International Baccalaureate Curriculum without first being selected based on test scores, grades, or the opinion of others. It's a school that conforms to the needs of the student, rather than the student conforming to an image created by the school. They are preparing the future citizens of our community faithfully and have instituted programs that are designed to inspire students to think critically, work collaboratively, and seek creative and innovative solutions to unique and relevant problems. I'm so proud of the work done by the staff at GRC, by purposely meeting the students where they are and providing the resources they need. And I want you to hear this fact. Next week, 100% of their senior class will graduate on time, and this is taking place for the seventh consecutive year. GRC is the only public school in Tidewater to achieve that remarkable record. I encourage you to visit and see firsthand the impact that equity and opportunity can have on the life of a student and on their dreams. Again, I'm more than grateful for this recognition. It's been my honor to serve this community as a member of the Human Rights Commission and, in the most important profession in the world, a teacher. But finally, I want to thank you. Thank you for your service to our city and to her citizens.
Thank you. Wonderful presentations to most deserving people. Thank you. Okay, at this point, we're going to move on to a public hearing on the lease of property, a communication tower 10,340 feet with access to utility easement on the southeast perimeter of Stumpy Lake Golf Course. And pursuant to the Virginia Code, Section 15.2-1813, the Virginia Beach City Council will hold a public hearing to obtain public comment regarding a proposed communication tower lease agreement on the Crown Castle GT Company, LLC, for city property containing 10,340 feet, together with an access and utility easement pursuant thereto located at southwest-eastern perimeter of the Stumpy Lake Golf Course. Any speakers?
No, Mayor.
Okay, that being none, we will close the hearing. Okay, now, at this point, I want to remind, first, you know, speaker's policy. I'd like to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives or groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have to three minutes to speak on a single item. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal session of the meeting must be limited to the subject or the item that is being considered by the council at the time you are called. For items placed on the consent agenda, a speaker will have up to three minutes to address any single item. If a speaker wishes to address multiple consent-- communication tower, ten thousand three hundred and forty feet, with access to utility easement on the southeast perimeter of Stumpy Lake Golf Course. And pursuant to the Virginia Code, Section fifteen point two dash eighteen thirteen, the Virginia Beach City Council will hold a public hearing to obtain public comment regarding a proposed communication tower lease agreement on the Crown Castle GT Company, LLC, for city property containing ten thousand three hundred and forty feet, together with an access and utility easement appertained to thereto located at southwest eastern perimeter of the Stumpy Lake Golf Course. Any speakers?
No, Mayor.
Okay, that being done, we will close the hearing. Okay, now, at this point, I want to remind, first, you know, speaker's policy. I'd like to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives or groups to speak for ten minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have the three minutes to speak on a single item. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal session of the meeting must be limited to the subject or the item that is being considered by the council at the time you are called. For items placed on the consent agenda, a speaker will have up to three minutes to address any single item. If a speaker wishes to address multiple consent agenda items, the speaker will have a cumulative time of six minutes to address those items. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of items that have been signed up to address. And finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussions and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the city council wants to hear from you and to ensure all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Do we have any single speakers?
No, Mayor, we don't have any speakers until open dialogue.
Okay, this, Madam Vice, Mayor, if you would go right ahead and...
Yes, so all items are on the consent agenda. Under K, ordinances and resolutions, number one is the ordinance to amend the FY 2023-24 annual appropriation ordinance, Section seventeen and eighteen, rate employee salary increase. Number two is a resolution to approve the modification of a construction contract, rate Providence Road sidewalk improvements. Number three is a resolution to authorize and direct the city manager to execute the memorandum of agreement, rate continue the Hampton Roads Regional Stormwater Management Program between the city and Hampton Roads Planning District. Number four, which is recommended for indefinite deferral, is the ordinance to authorize temporary encroachment into a portion of city-owned property along the Eighty-third Street Beach Access, fifteen feet into the coastal sand dews, rate construct and maintain long beam welded to a steel pole and chrome-painted fiberglass dolphin. Number five is the ordinance to authorize temporary encroachment into a five-foot city utility and drainage easement and adjacent to twenty-two oh five Admiral Circle to construct and maintain a vinyl bulkhead and wood wharf. Number six is the ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute memorandum of understanding with the Virginia Department of Historic Resources and Asbury Christian Fellowship Church to accept and appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars from Virginia Department of Historic Resources to the FY 2022-23 Consolidated Grant Fund operating budget rate restoration activities at Pleasant Ridge School at thirteen ninety-two Princess Anne Road. Number seven is the ordinance to accept and appropriate one thousand, one million, one nine hundred nineteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars from Virginia Office of Children's Services to the FY 2022-23 Human Services Operating Budget and transfer six hundred ninety-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars within the Human Services Department for required local match rate children's services and act program. Number eight is the ordinance to accept and appropriate thirteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars from the Virginia Department of Social Services to the FY 2022-23 Human Services Operating Budget and authorize eight thousand, four hundred and forty dollars local match from available funds within the Human Services Department, rate support the companion services program. Number nine is the ordinance to accept and appropriate three thousand, one hundred dollars from Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services to the FY 2022-23 Human Services Operating Budget, rate substance abuse prevention and treatment.
I open a public hearing on planning?
And number one is to defer indefinitely is the City of Virginia Beach Development Authority, City of Virginia Beach Authority and VCH LLC for modification of offers and conditional rezoning.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, that's recommended for deferral to June twentieth.
Oh, I'm sorry, until June twentieth. The other one was indefinitely. Number two, Whit G. Sessoms and Teresa Sessoms for a change of nonconformity of expansion of dwelling at one oh nine Forty-third Street, District Six. Number three is the Commonwealth Auto Group Inc. Bayside Properties LLC regarding modification of conditions to a conditional use permit, rate modern vehicle sales and rentals at four hundred eighty-seven thirty-three Haygood Road, District Nine. Number four is Giglamook Market LLC, Saint Francis Episcopal Church, for conditional use permit, rate open air market at five oh nine South Rosemont Road, District Three. Number five is the Kelly Pepper, Kelly and David Pepper, for a conditional use permit for a family daycare home at twenty-one thirty-two Tinsdale Drive, District Five. Number six is the Nancy Braithwaite for a conditional use permit regarding bulk storage yard at five twenty Oceana Boulevard, I mean, Oceana Boulevard, yeah, District Six. Number seven is the ordinance to add Article twenty-four to the city zoning ordinance and amend city zoning ordinance, CZO, Section one oh two, reestablish the Pembroke SGA Overlake District, Western Campus. Number eight is the ordinance to amend city zoning ordinance, Section two oh two, regarding flood, flood zone height requirements. Number nine is the ordinance to amend the Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan Interpretation Flood Resilience Toolkit and Commercial Area Pattern Book.
Okay, there's motion? Second. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Berluci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Remick?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Schulman?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you've approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, and if we can move on to appointments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Under Arts and Humanities Committee, appoint Cynthia Romero and appoint Mark Johnson. Under Bayfront Advisory Commission, to reappoint Philip Davenport and Robert McGoon. The Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, reappoint Patrick Duhaney. Housing Advisory Board, appoint Terry Stevens as a citizen member. Tidewater Community College Board, appoint Connie Meyer. Virginia Beach Cannabis Advisory Force, appoint Letitia Lancaster. And the Wetlands Board, appoint Jared Katson as a full member.
Any discussion? Vote is open.
Mark, did you have some?
Roll call. Yes, any?
Second. Is that what you're looking for?
I believe you are going to make an appointment of a liaison.
Oh, for the...
Oh, yes, that's true. We were going to do Josh Schulman as liaison to the billboard, the billboard ordinance.
The Adams Outdoor Litigation.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Mayor Dyer?
Yes.
Did we cover beaches and waterways? Beaches and waterways, were there any appointments?
Beach and waterways?
Danny. Oh, thank you.
Danny Murphy.
I believe I had a representative from District Three.
So I had a representative from District Six, as well as the mayor's representative.
Do we have enough? Because they're not on my list, Karen.
I don't know if you wanted to do those appointments tonight.
Okay, if we can hold them to next time, just to make sure that we go according to oil, would that be okay? Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, vote to approve is open.
Councilmember Berluci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Remick?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Schulman?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Nay.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of ten to one, you've appointed those as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, any unfinished business? Any new business? Okay, we are adjourned. Do we have anybody for open mic?
Yes, Mayor, we have seven speakers.
Okay, thank you. We'll just wait till the...